Is that any better? Okay, I'll just get closer. Madam Clerk, can you verify that Supervisor Johnson is on the telephone?
Supervisor Johnson?
Ready.
Okay. We'll begin the meeting this morning with an invocation, and I'll ask Supervisor Ron Gold to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, as the events of this day continue to unfold, we seek your clarity and your guidance as we gather here together as a board. Cover us with a blanket of honesty and patience that is not of this world as we struggle for solutions. Help us to endure disagreement and strife with godly courage and patience as we make decisions that affect the lives and the health of others in our communities. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the symbol of our great republic. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Supervisors made my motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the Board's attorney on any item contained within this agenda pursuant to A R S 38, 43103, A3, and 4. At this time, I'll entertain a motion and action to call for an executive session to be held on October the 5th, 2020 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with the A R S 38, 43103, A3, and 4 to discuss items noticed in the agenda with an asterisk.
Second motion.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion and action to approve waiving the reading in full of items presented for discussion, adoption, or approval at this meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The official business come before the Board. First item would be discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Attorney Ryan Esland, do we have anything this morning?
Nothing to report to the Board, thank you.
Thank you. Next item will be committee or legislative reports. We'll begin with Supervisor Johnson on the telephone.
Nothing, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Gold?
Ninety-eight, Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Watson?
Ninety-eight, Madam Chairman.
And Supervisor Angus?
Nothing here.
Okay, and I wanted to make a report that I attended the RCOA virtual meeting and was reminded that September is Fall's Prevention Awareness Month. And WACOG is partnering with the Western Chapter of Arizona Fall Prevention Coalition to raise awareness in Arizona counties, including Mojave. One in three fall victims are more than 80 years of age, and Mojave County has the 13th highest number of age-adjusted fall rate of hospitalization and the 9th highest mortality rates by county in Arizona with the cost exceeding $1.9 billion. Older residents at risk of falling need programs that can teach them specific everyday strategies to improve mobility and stability and reduce fall risk so that, as Chairman of the Board, I do support WACOG and the Fall Prevention Coalition. And we would have done this as a resolution, but we -- the information was gotten to me too late to get on the agenda. But I do want to say a point of privilege that my husband is in this category of 80 years of age or older, and he has just fallen. And so he's injured. It's going to take a while for him to heal, so I take this a little personally this morning. So he's going to be fine, but let's look after our elders and make sure they don't fall like my sweet husband did. Okay, going on now to the county manager's report. Do you have anything, Mr. Elders?
Madam Chairman, I do. I will be brief. I have a couple of items. The first one related to a countywide Facebook page. We -- various departments, elected and unelected, have had a Facebook page, but we do not have an account countywide. It has been adjusted. I fully agree that it is important to communicate and interact with county residents and the public, so we will be launching that, and it should happen in the next couple of weeks. It will be interactive, where public members will be able to comment and email the county, and hopefully it'll all be appropriate, and we will respond. That's it on that item. The other item that I have is we do not recognize, I think, enough our county employees when they do improve processes and work hard to be efficient. I'd like to point out to the Board this morning that, for example, within Public Works, the traffic control group, which is a small group that maintains all signs within the county, traffic, street signs and otherwise, have been at it for some time, and to be specific, 10 years ago, they had to maintain, either fix or replace about 20% of the signs that we have in Mojave County. We have well over 20,000, so 20% was about 6,000 a year. And in 2019, they had reduced that to 7% of the total signs being worked on or repaired. And that was simply by just changing the type of post that they use from a U-channel to a square channel, so to a square post. And that is definitely substantial saving, both in time and money, and I just wanted you, the Board members, to be aware of that. Last but not least, we have county employees that are involved in both state and national professional organizations, and they truly do learn from them and teach them about what we have going on here in Mojave County, and we really have a lot to be proud of and the Board to be proud of. One example is Tara Acton, who is our procurement director and is serving currently as a chair of the National Institute of Government Purchasing. And again, a lot is discussed about procurement methods and improvements. The other is Steve Lutowski and the Public Works team. They have been recognized by the Federal Highway Administration, which, as you all know, is a national organization, for a technique and a method that they've come up with to inspect culverts on roadways, and we have thousands of them. So this is a -- it's a significant improvement, and Federal Highway has not only recognized it nationally, but they have asked the county staff to present in a webinar to talk about what they came up with. So that's it for me. I just wanted you to be aware of it. Often enough, the negative overcome and overwhelms those positive things that we -- that the staff do do, and I just wanted you to be aware of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and congratulations for the recognition to Tara and Steve Lutowski in the sign shop. And as Mike Hendricks used to say quite often, Mojave County is an exceptional county, and I think if this is portrayed maybe on our Facebook page, people will begin to appreciate some of the good work that we do here on the county level.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's a great idea for Facebook, and that is really the intent of Facebook, so we will indeed.
Yeah, thank you very much, Sam. Okay, and the next item, I'll entertain a motion to approve the August 3rd, 2020 Board of Supervisors' regular meeting minutes and the July 2nd, 9th, 13th, 16th, 20th, 23rd, 27th, and 30th, 2020 Board of Supervisors' special meeting minutes. We have been busy.
Second motion.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We'll now go on to the call to the public. The in-person call to the public portion of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors' meeting is allowed following social distancing and CDC guidelines. However, comments can be submitted to the Clerk of the Board no later than 5:00 p.m. on the Friday prior to the Board meeting, and those will be publicly read during the Board of Supervisors' meeting. Madam Clerk, do you have anything to share with us?
Madam Chair, I received two submissions for call to the public. First one was submitted by Dawn Taylor, 1375 Train Drive in Bullhead City. He wrote, "I find it funny that this Board mandates masks and social distancing in their own buildings, but the supervisors who sit up there and make these decisions are not following their own guidelines. There have been several Board meetings I have watched where Board members are not socially distant from one another, and hardly any of you keep your mask on the entire meeting. Maybe this Board needs to set an example if they want others to follow it. I just read them, I don't write them."
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
The second submission was from Jennifer Taylor, 1375 Train Drive, Bullhead City. "I want to know how it is fair that I was unable to attend my gym for months, but county employees were still enjoying a gym in a taxpayer-funded building. Some of the decisions being made by this Board during this pandemic are hypocritical and insulting to us taxpayers. I didn't even know the county had their own gyms, let alone three of them. Since I partially paid for these gyms with my taxpayer money, how do I get a pass to exercise in them?" Again, I read them, I do not write them.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do have two people that have signed up for the call to the public. First will be Joy Bancroft. Good morning, Joy.
Good morning.
And she will be speaking about code enforcement.
Hold on a second. Sorry. Yeah, come on.
Joy, if you could just give us your name and the city that you reside in, and then you'll have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Joy Bancroft. I live at 4682 Linden Drive in Topoc Golden Shores. We are so excited about the progress in Golden Shores, from getting properties cleaned up to the attention we have received from law enforcement and some officials in this room. But first, let me say thank you for considering to fill some of our district boards. The candidates, including myself, are all trying to make a difference in Golden Shores and to make our community more valuable and a credible part of the county. With that being said, when one project or project goes away, there are so many more. Just like code enforcement, we evaluate and rank the properties by severity. However, our consideration involves if it is a safety issue, a hazard, a dilapidated structure that has become an attractive nuisance to those that turn into breathing grounds for criminal activity. This is generally homes that have become abandoned due to the owner absence of various reasons. So let me show you 4563 Tanga Verity. Hopefully, yes. Okay, so this property is, I believe, the owner passed away and abandoned it. It sits on a bluff and looks over the Refuge Lake and includes property down below to the south. The house on the bluff is completely unlivable. The surrounding areas are taken over by RVs, and they just keep appearing, and local druggies keep starting and setting up camps. Some gentlemen also out of the blue decided to pay for the taxes, so I don't know if that stopped part of the process in the abatement committee. So this is the actual property, too. You can see it's kind of a triangle shape. So I come to you, and I say item 14 of the agenda to adopt a new nuisance abatement ordinance is to be discussed next month. So please, Tim Walsh, sign me up. Sign me up in your committee to help write this ordinance, because I've become an expert at this. I feel very strongly about these kinds of properties. So that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next and final speaker is Scotty McClure. Please give us your name and the city you reside in, and you have three minutes.
Huh?
Say your name and your city, and you have three minutes, Scotty.
I have a hard time hearing you guys. I didn't know we could do submissions. Remember, Hildy, I asked you back in March if we could do this, and you guys voted it down three to two. I guess now we can just write a one-page letter? I didn't know about this. The only reason I knew this meeting was on today is because I finally, this stinking newspaper, finally said you're going to have a meeting. You guys are doing a real crappy job on informing the public. I've been in some outer space mode or something. You need to post this on your front doors down there, in the library, on their front door. We can't go back there where you used to post it, and you didn't post it until I started griping. I'm tired of not being able to know when you're going to do something here. You have all these special meetings, and this newspaper doesn't print it anymore. We don't get the Kingman paper, the Lake Havasu paper anymore down there because the library's closed. The newspaper section is. Start posting the agenda, not asking anymore. The Attorney General is waiting for my letter. He's still waiting for the one I'm griping about from last November and December when you guys screwed me over here. I'm not done with you guys. Now I see we're losing the water rides from Cibola to Queen Creek. What are you going to do about that? Nothing, probably. Now, the Safeways are locking their doors, or supposedly they're putting carts in front of them and not locking them. This is against the handicap. I've been biting this down at City Hall, finally Bullhead threw on a $750 eighth pond. Somebody told me go to the fire marshal about the one in Mojave down there at Aztec Road and 95. They've got carts lined up like this. I can't go in the damn store to get food. You need to get these doors open. Walmart's got it, the thing's blocked up, chained up. You need to do something about this. Some of us can't go in the stores anymore, and this has been going on since March. It took -- yeah, they down there in Phoenix, I've had the city working on this for a long time, since March. They wait their 30 days and say, "Ha-ha, screw you, we got more lawyers than you do." You need to do something. I need help. And you better be ready to store these vaccinations that we're going to be getting here in November. I've got COPD, I should be first in line. I want to be first in line. But if you guys don't have a place to store this stuff, we're not going to get them. I've got COPD like big time. And you guys just need to start posting your agenda so I can come up here and be real nice again.
Thank you, Scotty. Okay, that concludes our call to the public.
May I respond?
Supervisor Angus, you certainly can.
I'm just going to respond. We've had this conversation many times, Scotty, and our yearly meeting list is posted on my door because you requested it. All our agendas are posted online. You can call my office, and they would print it out for you. We've talked about this before, and as far as doors to stores being opened, all the doors are open. I was just at Safeway in Bullhead City yesterday, all the doors were open, so I hope.
That took me six months.
I know, and I know that that was some -- I just wanted that on the record, that the doors are opened at the stores in Bullhead City. Thank you.
Okay, going on to the -- Supervisor Gold?
I also have, at Scotty's suggestion, posted the agendas on the doors of both my office in Mojave Valley and in Lake Havasu City, so those are there if you feel like cruising by. If you can find my secret office in Lake Havasu, we'll give you a cookie. Thank you.
Okay, going on to the Board of Supervisors' consent agenda. The following items listed under consent agenda will be considered as a group enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a Board member so requests. So starting with Supervisor Johnson, do you have anything you'd like removed?
Nothing, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Nothing this morning.
Supervisor Angus?
68. 68.
It's going to take me a minute to find 68.
Chapter 67.
That's true, but I have several pages here. Okay, Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Number 63.
I would like to pull a number 14. And number 18. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve items 5 through 87 minus items 14, 18, 63, and 68.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion's approved. Going on to item number 14, I pulled this item simply because I would like to hear a little bit more about this, maybe a summary of where we're going with this, because it's really something I've been fighting for for a long time, and I'm looking forward to the improvements and the changes that are being suggested. So, Tim Walsh, good morning. Can you just give us the short story on this?
You bet. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Item 14 is a proposal to set a public hearing to make revisions to the public nuisance ordinance. Currently, Mojave County has ordinance number 9802, which is our public nuisance ordinance. It's based off of Arizona Revised Statute 11268, which allows the county to, basically to address these dilapidated properties, trash, garbage, debris, filth, that type of stuff. In the approved budget for this year, the Board approved moving trash abatement from environmental health over to planning and zoning. In order to do so, there are some varying authorities. Public Health operates under Title 36, which is a statute which is delegated to them from the State Health Department. Zoning does not have that same delegation agreement. We operate under Title 11, or Statute 11-268, which allows us the ability to enforce those items. So basically, what we'll be proposing to the Board is some revisions to 9802, which will allow zoning to take over that trash, as well as to enhance some of the abilities that we have for zoning violations as well. One significant item is Title 36, just to make the Board aware, Title 36 allows Public Health to also enforce within, basically throughout the whole county, which would include within the incorporated areas of the cities. 11268 is just in the unincorporated areas. So just of note, the -- by making the switch, the zoning will be operating only in those unincorporated areas of the counties. But basically, 112 -- what this is proposing is to set that public hearing in October. We'll have that to the Board for review and have that discussion in October.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted everybody to know that we've been working hard on this, it's going forward, and we're going to have a public hearing, like you said, and a lot of decisions will be made based on those hearings. Thank you very much. This is so exciting, and well overdue. Thanks, Tim. Any questions of Mr. Walsh? Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Tim, so the Health Department would still be able to deal with trash nuisances inside incorporated cities, wouldn't it?
They still have that ability. We're actually working to notify the cities of the Board's decision to move the trash abatement from Public Health over to zoning, and working with them to give them proper notice that after a certain date, we would not be able to provide that service anymore.
But the Health Department could still go after.
They could still do it, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to approve setting a public hearing on October 5th, 2020.
Second motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Next item is item number 18. It will be to approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors' Resolution Number 2020-125, recognizing and expressing gratitude to the firefighters and the various agencies involved in containment and suppression activities of the ridge fire, and to all firefighters in Mojave County who have combated wildfires during the 2020 fire season to protect lives and property, often when placing their own lives at risk. And I pulled this item just to give recognition and thanks to everyone that helped with the ridge fire in the Walupi Mountains, which was ignited in mid-August. And we brought in the Bureau of Land Management Field Office, they brought in their response teams. There was the Arizona Central West Zone Type 3 Incident Management Team and the Southwest Area Type 2, Team Number 3 to manage the additional fire resources and the fire containment and suppression activities. And then there were a lot of various fire districts and city fire departments in Mojave County, as well as the Arizona State Forestry and Fire Management Department, the Sheriff's Office, Public Works, Fairgrounds, and Risk and Emergency Management Department, and other entities that provided assistance or support to the incident activities. This was a big deal here in the District 4 area of Mojave County, and our beloved Walupi Mountains were in. Walupi Mountains were in somewhat danger and these groups came in, they took care of the fire and kept it under control. And I just wanted to publicly say thank you to everybody that helped. So with that, I make a motion that we approve item number 18 as written.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. The next item is item 63. This was pulled by Ron Gould. This would be approved, canceling certain Mojave County special district elections for the November 3rd, 2020 election, and appoint the candidates who file nomination petitions or write in nomination papers as elected to office. Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I pulled this at the request of a constituent because he was going to come and speak to it. He had a, has an issue with it, but I don't know if he's actually here or not. He is. I don't know if he filled out a slip to speak.
No, that's. Well, I do. Keith Parker. I do have a slip. If you will approach the podium, give us your name and the city.
Do we want to let, why don't we let?
We'll let Mr. Parker speak first and then we'll know what his questions are and we can entertain them. Thank you, though.
Hi, I'm Keith Parker. I live at 2078 East Oasis Lane in Fort Mojave, Arizona. I am a current member of the Fort Mojave Mesa Fire Board. I am one of the three that you are just going to arbitrarily just appoint to the position on the fire board. I'm the one that went out and did the due diligence, went out and got my signatures, my 50 votes, met with my community, met what their concerns were, and I put in my paper for the nomination. One of the people that are on the write-in right now is a current board member, and she was not going to run for the position. As a U.S. citizen, it is our right that we be voted in to a place of office. It's in our Constitution. Not allowing me to be voted into office, which it should be legally, is taking the rights away from us voters. First, you're going to take away our right to vote, then you're going to take away our guns, then you're going to take away our First Amendment. It's going to keep going on. It's going to start compounding when we start taking these rights away. I have a real problem with somebody who does not go out there and do their work, get their signatures, if they want to be a write-in, that's great, be a write-in, but get your 50 votes, like I had to get my 50 signatures. Get your votes. Don't just get put onto the ballot or not even get put on the ballot, just get appointed a position that you guys have no idea what's going on. One of those people right now is getting ethics violations and conflict of interest paperwork filed this week. And you're just going to appoint them. Then we're stuck with them for four years and we're going to have to go through the legal battle through this again, to get them off the board, get somebody else in there. Being a member of the department, we budgeted $20,000 for the election. I'm a taxpayer. A lot of these people here are taxpayers. We pay your salaries. We pay the Board of Elections salaries. Do your job. The excuse I saw in the paper this weekend was ridiculous. Well, it shortens the ballot, it saves costs. Over the right of a U.S. citizen and somebody to vote, we're going to save costs, that's more important. I'm requesting that you pull the Fort Mojave Mesa cancellation of election and make it an election. That's all really much I got to say. I'm just praying that you do the right thing, what's good for us citizens, because we, you guys have no idea who's being appointed to these positions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Gold?
Sir, make the point that you made when we talked on the phone, campaigning.
Well, campaigning is, you're taking a ride away from me to campaign. I can't even campaign. I don't want to be appointed to this position. I want to be elected to this position. I can't campaign against the other two. I can't do nothing. The unions, the fire department, the members in this community don't have a say and a right of what's going on. You just want to appoint two people because they put in the paper for a write-in. How fair is that? I can't go out, they can't campaign against me, I can't campaign against them. Let's do the right thing.
Supervisor Angus?
Doesn't the request to not hold the election if they have the amount of people have to come from the district? In the past, I don't think we've ever made that decision.
I don't think we've ever made that decision on our own. I think the district had to request it.
I don't think that's necessarily the case. So I've got the statute here, 16410. In any election that is to be held pursuant to Title, in this case Title 48, this is a Title 48 election, if the total number of persons who file a nomination petition for a candidate and the number of persons who file a petition for write-in as prescribed by the statutes is less than or equal to the number of positions to be filled, the county Board of Supervisors may cancel the election. Yeah, so it's optional, it's may. And so I don't know if the districts contact us and ask us. I think actually the elections does it because it's pretty common to cancel elections. I mean, the people who are running for election are equal to or less than the number of seats that are open. So it's a cost-saving measure, it's a convenience measure and things like that. And just a couple of things, I respect the position you're taking here, but I will point out that what they've done is perfectly legal, it is contemplated by the statute. There's different paths by which you can be nominated to a position. It can come through the process that you did, or it can come through the write-in way. And really, it's a strategic decision for candidates to do. If a fourth person would have done a write-in, then those names wouldn't be on there, and we wouldn't even have this discussion because we would have an election. You would have the upper hand, so to speak, because your name will be on the ballot and nobody else will be, they have to be written in, which is, in many instances, a disadvantage to them. But in this instance, they chose to do it by write-in, which is perfectly legal, and that is a path by which they can do.
But there's a stipulation in the statute there that because you're canceling the election, there's so many days prior to the election that you can be a write-in candidate. Is that correct?
There's a deadline by which you can.
There's a 75-day prior to, that if you're canceling the election, you have 75 days to be a writing candidate. If you're not canceling the election, you have 24 days to be a writing candidate. I know several people that called in to the Elections Department wanting to file paperwork to be petitioned, to be writing candidates, and they were denied.
I don't think that's the case. No, that's not the case. That's not the case. The deadline.
I can bring the statute to you if you'd like.
Sure, give me the statute.
I mean, the Mojave Daily Newspaper, John Pennaker, gave me the statute that says it very clearly.
I'd be welcome to see it, but I'm pretty certain the deadline has passed for the writing candidate for the fire district election. That has passed.
If you're canceling the election.
I disagree. But if you have a contrary statute, I'm happy to look at it and review it. I'd be happy to.
I will get it to you.
Sure. And just so, I mean, I don't know if I, just so you're aware, the challenge that we have is we're on the deadline to print the ballots. So what we've got is, and the Deputy Director of Elections can speak to it more, and he can answer your questions, but there's two parts to preparing a ballot. There's the programming, where we have to send all the, excuse me, the county has to send all of the candidate information to the programmer so that the software has all the candidates and the races and so on. And then that deadline is September 4th, so that deadline has passed. And then the deadline to actually print it, to actually physically print them, is today. So today is that very deadline. And so to cancel this election, it would cause problems, it would cause difficulties for trying to get everything done as quickly as possible, try to get everything done, because we're already past the programming deadline. Deputy Director Harris and I and Director Tempert have discussed this possibility. It would be very difficult to put this on, but you're correct Supervisor Angus, it is a may, it is an absolute may. I will say, though, that it is within the authority of the supervisors to cancel this election because you routinely do it year after year. And this is not new. This is, in fact, to have this election would be new. This would be unusual to still hold this election when there's three seats and there's
Mr. Harris, do you have anything to add that hasn't been discussed? This is our Deputy Elections Director, Stephen Harris.
Yes, Steve Harris, Deputy Elections Director. So the statutes that were mentioned on the write-in is to whether, when you can file and when you can't. The day, for the last day for the write-ins to file was August 9th, 76 days before. We come to you 75 days before the election for the approval to cancel these elections. There are 23 special district potential elections. We have asked you to cancel 17 of those elections. Three others of those also have write-in candidates. This one, there were three people that filed for three seats, so it's typical that we ask for the cancellation of the election. The cost to the taxpayer, I understand they budgeted $20,000. It looks like the cost would be about $21,000. If we cancel the election, the cost is $115. You have Mr. Parker who filed legitimate, he went out and he got the nomination petition, got the required number of signatures. The other method of getting on the ballot is to collect for the write-ins, to file write-in paperwork, which these two other candidates did within the deadline period. There were others that apparently that called after the deadline had passed, so it's too late. The cost, if we cancel, as I said, $115. The cost, if we have the election, is approximately $7,000 on the election side of it and $13,900 on the voter registration side of it. So you have almost $20,000 cost. As Mr. Esquelin said, we're on deadlines. Our deadline to get our paperwork to our programmer was Friday, or to get them all the information. Our deadline to the printer is today. So really, it's your decision to make as to whether we cancel that or not. We did have another sitting board member call in on the Fort Mojave Mesa Fire District that was positive when we told him that we were going to request the election be canceled, didn't have any issue with it. I understand that Mr. Parker is upset because he went out and collected the signatures, but these write-ins will have to get, if it's on the ballot, at approximately 10,000 active voters, they'll have to get 48 votes. And if they don't, or the election is canceled, if we cancel it, you appoint them. If they don't get the 48, you have the election anyway, then their board can appoint. So it seems to me like a win for the district to cancel the election and appoint the people that have legitimately applied for the positions, three seats, three people.
And if I could also just chime in, I think I found the statute that the gentleman was referring to, 16312. A writing candidate shall file the nomination paper prior to the 40th, not later than the 40th day before the election, except that, and that exception here is what applies, a candidate running as a writing candidate for an election that may be canceled pursuant to 16410, that's what we're doing, shall file the nomination paper not later than 5:00 p.m. on the 76th day before the election. So that's what we're talking about. This is the exception here to that 40-day rule. I can see how it could be interpreted differently, but this is the way that we see that, this is the way we're reading it, that this is, okay, deadline, 76 days, then we can then cancel the election if we wish to, which is in statute, the legislature has passed that, and it's been, happens every other year, at every election. So you have that.
Sir, if you could come to the podium so that the audience can hear you?
He states that it's a benefit to the district to cancel the election. How is that a benefit when, if the election happens, they don't reach the 48 votes that they're required to get? Because you've got to remember, they got to physically bubble it in and they have to write their name in. And I, you're asking a lot for somebody to do that. Over somebody who's going to get elected in, and then those two empty seats will be filled through an advertisement and go through an interview process where you get the best candidate for the position, instead of arbitrarily, just because they made their paperwork in time, got it in in time, but they have zero experience at anything like this. Zero. And they're going to be a better candidate and a benefit to the district? I don't understand how.
I don't think it's the issue of whether these are good candidates or not. That's not the issue. These people have gone through the steps. They did it exactly like you, except they chose option B as opposed to A. One way is to go through the petition method that you went through, the other method is to do the write-in method. Both are perfectly legal, both are perfectly permissible, and the statute allows that. It's not a question of whether they're qualified or not, it's not a question of whether they're good or not, it's a question of, okay, should this district hold this election? And I'll tell you, this would be completely unprecedented if the board chose to hold this election where there's three candidates and there's three seats. I've only been here for about three and a half years. I can't imagine that prior to my time that the board has ever done that, but it's possible, I guess, but usually you cancel this election. That's typically how it is. In terms of the cost, the taxpayers will bear that cost. The taxpayers will be bearing the cost of running an election for three seats when three candidates have submitted it.
But so what?
Supervisor Angus?
But that cost, that $20,000, is borne by the district.
Correct, that's correct.
So are they asked, at any point, are they asked, or is it just a given that this will be canceled? I can see where the board would want, but that should be a decision made by the board, by the board of the elected district.
So is there anyone in the audience that's a sitting board member from this fire district? The fire chief, the chairman?
I am currently.
Okay, so you're currently elected and you're running for reelection?
Yes.
Okay.
I have one more question. So, excuse me, the people running as write-ins, they have to get, you had to get how many signatures?
50.
50. All they had to do was fill out paperwork?
Correct.
They didn't have to get, go out and talk to people? Because these were people that were already on the board, they just said they weren't going to run, and then when no one else stepped forward, they said, okay, well, I put in my paperwork. So it was, you know, kind of like you had to do more?
That's.
That's not it?
No. That was not it. It was that we as a board knew one was not going to run, actually two were not going to go for reelection, one of them is a captain in Bullhead City. He's on the board. He's not running because he was going to go for a position, a possible chief position. So he opted out to keep a conflict of interest. He is one of them that did want to go back in as a write-in at the last minute. But it would come down to it that there's a lot of stuff going on, disparaging going on between the JPA. I'm sure you guys are all aware of the JPA that's happening. One of those board members, the one person that did the write-in, is one of the board members trying not to do the JPA.
That's all politics.
The other one is a person who was conspiring, who was going up in for an ethics violation that will be submitted to the district attorney this week. So there's a collusion going on between the two that was disparaging the Bullhead City chief, that was disparaging the Fort Mojave chief, that was disparaging one of our active board members. So the two are working together, and then we find out there's a conflict of interest with one of them who is an insurance agent that sells insurance to all the residents in that area. It is in her best interest to keep the district not getting better and saving money to the taxpayers. So she gets the higher commissions, the higher rate she gets, she gets higher commissions. The higher rate she gets, she gets higher commissions. There's a direct conflict of interest. Those are the, that's what's being filed this week. But as to what you say is, when I had my signatures to get, I got questioned by the people. Why would, do I want to vote for you, or why do I want to sign for you to be on the board, just like you guys? Why do you want to be on it? They want to hear the reasoning why, so they can feel confident about them, you know, with their signature for nomination. Those two got nothing. Yeah, I filed the paperwork. I didn't have to talk to nobody. They didn't have to say anything about why they want to be in that position. What are they going to do that's going to benefit them? They had none of that. And yet, I can't even campaign against them.
Mr. Parker, I think that, you know, I agree with you on principle. You know, I don't know about the politics that are going on in your district, but it does seem like this is legal. It's a little late, but maybe this is something going forward that we should look at as an election department and see how we can change this for the future.
And I know you know as much as I know, sometimes it's difficult to get people to fill in a position for appointment. You might advertise and you could go through, I mean, I've sat on the interview board for people to appoint into position, and you could go through several interviews, but at least you get the opportunity to interview. There is no opportunity here. They're just appointed. Here you go. Deal with it.
Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Parker, I assume that you'll probably be elected if we go through the election process. And that would give your board three votes in order, the ability then to have put together a quorum. What is the likelihood that the two write-in candidates would be selected as board members?
Zero to none, because we're going to, there's a lot of us who are going to campaign against them.
Thank you for answering my question.
And just so the board has all the information, if you look at the backup, this isn't the only one that you're being asked to cancel when they have write-ins. This is, so if you look, Desert Hills Fire District has a write-in candidate. Golden Shores Fire District has a write-in candidate. Mojave Valley Fire District has a write-in candidate. So, there are four different districts who have writing candidates. It's just one method by which you can go forward and be elected. Either you do it through the petition process, or you do it through writing candidate. You as elected officials could do the same thing. The downside to your campaign is that your name is not on the ballot. These people, these two people will not be on the ballot, but it's still perfectly legal, perfectly permissible. And if, and four districts are doing it. It's not just this one. Four are doing it. And also, if you were to, if you were to suddenly change tact and now start holding these elections, then that being four different districts would have to pay for it. So...
Mr. Epselen, could we go forward with the election with one fire district and not the other special districts?
Yeah, you can pick and choose which ones you want to do and not. It's a may. As Supervisor Angus pointed out, it's a may. So, you can decide which ones you want to cancel and which ones not. It's not mandatory, but as I said, it's common practice. It's almost always happened that you cancel these elections. And we are just, we are literally, I'm trying to give you as much information as I can. We are literally on the doorstep where we have to print today. We'd have to, it's going to be difficult to get moving forward. And also, we have, unrelated to this, we have a petition challenge for Mr. Kanye West that is going on right now, and I've been working on it as we speak. Literally, I've been receiving emails on that petition challenge because the deadline is today, and there's already a lawsuit in motion. A second one was filed this morning in it. So, we are literally at the 11:59 PM hour.
Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I realize that we're probably setting some precedence here, but it would seem reasonable to me that if a small district is requesting the election, or a representative of the district is requesting the election, then we should go through with that process. If we come to the point where the other districts are petitioning not to go to election, you know, we're here to listen to the people. And Mr. Parker makes a very valid point. With that, I would be very much in favor of the Mojave Valley Fire District to go on the ballot with Mr. Parker's name on it and then approve the other districts that have not come to us to be removed.
What I would point out is that you have two legitimate means of placing your names on the ballot, either as nomination to going out and getting the signatures. It was 48 for Mr. Parker. It's 48 votes for the write-ins. So, you have the other people chose as write-ins. And as Mr. Epselen pointed out, if there was another write-in candidate that had filed within the deadline period, there would be an election. There would be no question, because there would be more people. However, in this case, you have three people that followed the legal process to get their, to sit on the board. So, the write-ins essentially took a gamble, if you will, that nobody else was going to file. Had somebody else filed, there'd be an election. But historically, as Mr. Epselen pointed out, you have appointed where there are sufficient number of seats for the district and sufficient number of candidates.
So, Mr. Harris, if this motion passes and this fire district goes forward with the election, the two write-in candidates have to get how many signatures written in?
48 out of about...
So, if they get 47 or less, that they're not elected, and then this fire district can appoint...
So, they go out and they find out if you were to say there's going to be an election, they find out there's going to be an election, they go out there and tell their friends, family, pass the word, and write their name in 48 times.
Exactly, but if they only get 47, they are not elected, nor are they appointed, and then the fire district has a, has a quorum, and they can appoint their own members after they interview them.
Correct, but they could do that even if they're, well, no. Yes, you're correct.
Okay, Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. How many people are on that fire district board?
I believe there are five. Five.
Five with three up for election.
Three up for election, yes.
I guess I understand what Supervisor Watson's saying, but we've got one person standing in front of us who's a candidate, who has nothing official from the board that they voted, saying they want to go out to a vote. And if it goes the way, if we decide to let them have their election, we've had, you know, precinct committee men, we've canceled all sorts of people. We need to come back with a policy that says all elections go forward then, if that's what we're going to do. We can't pick and choose. That's all, Madam Chair.
And there was another member of the board that none of the people that we've been talking about, they called in and was happy that we were putting it before you to cancel the election.
Madam Chair.
Manager Elsers.
If I may weigh in, in meeting with the election director on Friday, similar discussion was had. He stressed, and that is the point that Deputy Director is stressing and Attorney Ron Epselen is stressing, which is the timing. We, it's a two-step process, and getting to printing is critical. When we make arrangement in advance, then we are positioned in order so the printing gets done and our ballots are delivered. Had we not had a holiday yesterday and the board, had the board met yesterday, we would have had one day to spare. We do not have days to spare, any changes. We can make it, Supervisors. I do not want you to think otherwise, but instead of being placed in an order where we had made arrangement for, we'll be placed at the bottom. There is risk to ballots being printed and delivered. Please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor?
I don't, do we have a motion yet? We don't have a motion.
Oh, I thought Supervisor Watson.
No, I didn't state it as a motion.
Okay.
It's really not my district. I was looking forward to the supervisor of that district making a motion.
Supervisor Gold, we're putting you on the spot.
Supervisor Gold, can you turn on your microphone when we talk?
Your microphone's not on.
I'm going to look for the, the recommended motion here, which I should have done while we were debating. No results.
I'll second Supervisor Gold's motion.
He hasn't made one yet.
Yes, he did.
Oh, did you?
Well, I said I was going to make the recommended motion. I don't know if that counts.
May I have a motion to discuss?
Supervisor Angus, go ahead.
I just want to let Mr. Parker know that I agree with you, but one of the things that came up that I think is very important is that this didn't come from the board as a whole. It wasn't a quorum that, you know, asked that it be put on. It's just one person. It would be like any one of us saying that they speak for the board. So, unfortunately, I'm going to have to go along with the motion as written, but I do hope that this is something that we discuss so that this kind of thing doesn't happen again, and if there does, there is an avenue where boards can make sure that their voices are heard.
And piggybacking what Supervisor Angus is saying, I think the process is this. The special districts, fire districts, school districts, they ask for election support. They all do that. They'll do a motion or resolution to do that. But then the actual cancellation part, we just do it because we've always done it that way, and it's been doing it that way every time. That latter part is the part where the, because they, most districts want it to be canceled because they don't want to pay for an election that's not necessary.
When was the, when were the districts notified that they were going to be canceled?
Well, they just know.
Last week.
It happens every time. When they, what happens is, the process is, districts will say, we want election support. They'll formally pass a resolution or a motion, we want election support. They'll send it to the election department. The election department will gather the petitions and things, the different nomination forms, and if they see, if they see that the election should be canceled, then the election will notify the districts and say, hey, three people filed, so we're going to cancel the election.
Well, my point is, you just said that you got a call from another person on the, on the board who said they wanted it to be canceled.
Yeah, Mr. Harris, correct.
Right, and that there's one. So, in the future, if it had come from the board as a legitimate vote, then I would go along.
We were notified of the two writing candidates last week.
But there could have been a special meeting. You can have a special meeting.
The problem is, our chairman doesn't even allow us to do meetings. So, that's a problem we're having right now, we're trying to deal with. The only question I have for you, if this goes through an appointment, can we recall those positions?
Certainly. I mean, there's, they have the same powers and authorities, and they are subject to the same rules as a person who is, goes through the ballot and is elected on November 3rd. So, once they're appointed, they are subject to recall as well.
I'm going to let you know right now that I'm going to pull my nomination, because if you're not going to go for the U.S. citizens and the Constitution where you have to be voted in, I don't want nothing to do with it.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gold.
Let me restate, I don't disagree with the concept of, if it was sooner in the timeline, I'd be more than happy to let, to remove Fort Mojave Mesa Fire from the list of elections to be canceled, but it's too late in the timeline to do that. So, I move to cancel certain Mojave County special district elections for the November 3rd, 2020 elections and appoint the candidates who have filed nomination petitions or write-in nomination papers as elected to the office.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, going on to item number 68. This is pulled by Supervisor Angus. Accept the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program grant allocation of $35,728 and create a budget for, this is under the Mojave County Sheriff's Office. Supervisor Angus, go ahead.
Right, yes, thank you very much. Now, I just saw this, and I would like to know what this is going to be used for and what exactly the Coronavirus Emergency Supplement Funding Program is and where it comes from. What part of the sky did this money come from?
Hello, Supervisors. My name's Jason Ellsbury. I'm with the sheriff's office. I'd be happy to answer your questions about this. This grant came to us through the Department of Justice, the Bureau of Justice Administration as a supplement to our annual Edward and Byrd JAG grant funding. It is to assist agencies in dealing with the current pandemic as well as trying to anticipate the needs ongoing if there's another pandemic. The funding requested is to update the equipment in all of the sheriff's office main stations. That way, we can do distance training in meetings. What we have now is inadequate or does not exist for us to do training between us and, say, our Beaver Dam office. As far as Zoom meetings, we just don't have the equipment for that. And on top of that also, there is gas masks. I wondered if there's a question regarding those. Part of this grant issue is we cannot ask for federal funding for similar items, so like the disposable mask that I wore today. Because we're reimbursed through FEMA and DEMA, we're unable to ask for those for this grant cycle. And a worst-case scenario, if a deputy is out on the street and they don't have a mask that's disposable or an N95, and they have to go to a scene where somebody's exposed or a whole family's exposed, a gas mask would be more than acceptable to keep that employee safe.
What have you been doing for the last five months, like with Beaver Dam and your need for a gas mask?
We do have some still available. The last time the sheriff's office was able to have gas mask purchase was after 9/11 in 2001. So, obviously, in the past 19 years, the current stock we have has deteriorated, and we've actually gained more positions, so we need to purchase more of those for the...
And that, these things are the only things that this can be used for?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Supervisor Gold.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Sir, I would imagine that gas masks would be handy for the sheriff's department in an event of civil unrest?
Yes, they would.
Also interesting that these are Avon gas masks?
Yes, sir.
I didn't know Avon made gas masks. It's probably not the Avon that my wife used to wear.
I don't believe these are the Avons where they have the pink cars and sell, you know...
Sure.
All that stuff. No, this is, unfortunately, Avon has kind of cornered the market on gas masks as far as what's issued for law enforcement and military services.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Only entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we adopt item 68 as written.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
And we have a second by Supervisor Watson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Okay, well, now go on to our public hearings. Item number 88. I'll open the public hearing for a discussion of possible action to consider or approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-111, a reason of listed assessor partial numbers as described in the written agenda. Bringing these properties into compliance in the Moccasin vicinity of the Arizona Strip. The commission recommended approval by a unanimous vote. Supervisor Watson, this is in your area. Do you have any comments? Would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. Walsh and his entire department for taking on this pretty large, arduous task. And give you a little brief history behind this. When Mojave County was... When, uh, Mojave County was required by state action to do, uh, their planning for that area, many of the people, if not most of the people up there, were not aware of their ability to have an advocate voice in these, in these matters. So for years, it's been very difficult in that area of Moccasin, which is on the very northern part of Mojave County, just two miles south of the Utah border. And it makes it very difficult for those people to sell properties or to, uh, subdivide properties and, and free them of some of the burdens of the previous zoning that they were, were required to, to accept. So I just want to say thank you to Mr. Walsh and his entire department. They spent a great deal of time on this and, as you can read through the backup, over 90% of the people are responding to this with a great deal of advocacy. So, so thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. With that, I'd like to make a motion to...
Supervisor Watson, I need to...
I'm sorry, it's in a public hearing.
I need to close the public hearing. And we do not have any speakers signed up on this, so, um, the public hearing is closed and you can make your motion.
Thank you. At this point, after the close of the public hearing, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of, uh, this item.
Have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item, number 89. I'll open the public hearing for a discussion of possible action to consider the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-117. It's a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan and an amendment to the Yucca Area Plan for Assessor's Partial Number 20705009 in the Yucca vicinity. So I have no speakers signed up for this item either, so I'll close the public hearing. Open it up for discussion or a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move that item 89 be adopted.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second the motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item, number 90. I'll open the public hearing for a discussion of possible action to consider the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-118. This is a rezon of a parcel, of Assessor's Partial Number 20705009 for a minor land division in the Yucca vicinity. The Commission recommended approval, eight to zero. I have no speakers signed up, so I'll close the public hearing and open it up for a discussion or a motion.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
I move that item 90 be adopted.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to our regular agenda. Item number 91. This will be a discussion of possible action to appoint one of the professional engineer applicants to the Building Code Advisory Board vacant position contingent upon successful completion of a background check.
Madam Chairman, make a motion for approval.
Uh, Supervisor Watson, I think we need to choose one of the applicants.
Okay, I'm sorry, to appoint.
So, um, my recommendation would be to, uh, consider the appointment of Peter Prophet. Uh, he has a BA degree from the University of Wyoming and also a BS from NAU and he's, uh, a local professional civil engineer, uh, working at Mojave Engineering Associates. Is there anyone else that has a recommendation?
Was that in the form of a motion?
Um... I could make that a motion if there's no other recommendations. Okay, I will state that, um, as a motion that we appoint Peter Prophet.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Peter. Next item is number 92. Be a discussion of possible action to authorize Development Services and County Attorney's Office to call in the letter of credit held by City National... Bank for the Greens at Los Lagos subdivision track 4186 for the purpose of completing the required improvements to Vander Slice Road. Supervisor Gould.
Can I get, uh, Mr. Walsh to come up and clue us in on what's going on here?
Chairman Bishop, Supervisor Gould, uh, this, this item, uh, the Greens at Los Lagos was platted back in, uh, 2006 and most of the improvements have been done there. This is a, there's one final improvement. The Vander Slice Road along the east side of the property has not been finished yet. Um, the developer has pulled a, uh, a letter of credit to have that done as, as an assurance for the property. Um, that, that letter of credit has been extended a couple different times. Um, the expiration of that letter of credit is, uh, October 28th of this, of this year. The developer has requested that that, that their time be extended. However, in order to extend that time, a replacement letter of credit would be, would be needed in order to, to assure that. Cause, because once that, once we go past that deadline of October 28th, the county has no ability to call that back in. So what we're proposing here is that the board authorize Development Services and the County Attorney's Office to call in that letter of credit prior to that, that deadline. Uh, according to the developer, or according to the engineer and the developer, they're, they are working on it and they hope to have it done by that date. However, they have not provided us with a, a replacement assurance giving us the ability to, to extend that deadline. So this basically allows us to call that in prior to the 28th deadline, October 28th deadline, if those improvements are not completed.
So that way, Madam Chairman, uh, Mr. Walsh, we hold our leverage that that work will get done.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
I move that item 92 be adopted.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And I need to apologize to Supervisor Johnson. I was just notified that, uh, he was trying to speak and I apparently did not hear, hear you Supervisor Johnson. So is there anything that, uh, that we can reconsider or that you wanted to say?
No, that's okay, Madam Chair.
Okay, I, I do apologize. I heard some static, but I thought it was, uh, you leaving the conference as routinely you get disconnected and then come back on, so I do apologize. Next item, number 93. Discussion of possible action to approve by unanimous vote of the board the granting of a perpetual easement to Arizona Electric Cooperative Incorporated and Mojave Electric Cooperative Incorporated. A parcel owned by the County of Mojave and specifically described in Exhibit A of the grant of easement to allow the continued construction, operation, and maintenance of the existing 230 KV and 69 KV power lines subject to the terms and transmission line right-of-way easement agreement and authorize the Chairman of the Board to accept the offered $2,000 and sign all related documents. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Watson.
Thank you. In our previous agenda, the word "accept" was printed in our agenda and I'm glad to see "accept" being replaced. Uh, although it's $2,000, uh, compared to our budget, it's, it's still $2,000. Uh, and with that, I'd like to make a motion for the approval, um, of item 93.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chairman, I believe you need to make note that it was a unanimous vote.
Okay, uh, maybe we should do a roll call on this, just so we have it on the record.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Angus? Yes. Supervisor Johnson?
Yep.
Supervisor Gould?
Yes.
Chairman Bishop?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Item number 94. Discussion of possible action. Re-approve and authorize the Public Works Department Facilities Division to plan, procure in accordance with County Procurement Code and manage construction works providing utility connections for natural gas, electric, fiber optics, water, and sewer as preliminary phase to procuring design-build services for the new Mojave County Animal Shelter. For the purpose of representing the shelter site as fully buildable lot and further approve the appropriation of $430,000 for utility services, construction from the board approved $2.5 million appropriation for the new Mojave County Animal Shelter design and construction.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Watson.
I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for discussion. Supervisor Angus, go ahead.
Um, I just want to make sure that, that this $430,000 is coming from our approved. That's what I think it says. I just want to make sure.
Coming from what?
Coming from the $2.5 million appropriation that we voted on a couple of years ago, whenever we did that. This isn't in addition to the $2.5 million.
Supervisor Angus, I believe we approved $2 million appropriation for the new animal shelter and then we brought it back and approved an additional $500,000 for the utilities. But, uh, Steve Lekowski is, uh, available and he can confirm that if you like.
Good morning, Chairman Bishop, Supervisor Angus, uh, members of the board. Yes, the appropriation of the Phase 1 development funds, $430,000, is from the previously board-approved $2.5 million aggregate that will be set aside for animal shelter construction. In the first, uh, um, attempt to procure this, uh, under a design-build in 2019 and into 2020, uh, we found that, uh, the, uh, attempt by the design-builder was unsatisfactory in the scope of, uh, services being offered and likely influenced by certain site inconsistencies. So this approach with doing it, uh, through a Phase 1 with, uh, achieving the utilities built out to the site basically develops a buildable lot and it should add substantially more certainty to the ultimate design-build process. But yes, under the $2.5 million approved by the board already, no additional funds requested.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, Mr. Lekowski, I think what we're also doing is you're moving $230,000 of uncertainty onto the county and, uh, away from the contractor. Is that true?
Um, Chairman Bishop, Supervisor Gould, um, with the county undertaking these utility connections projects, uh, we have a, a very good relationship and, uh, you know, understand, um, essentially what needs to be accomplished with, uh, cost efficiency in mind, uh, making these utility connections. And I think sometimes with a design builder, notably a contractor, uh, they don't necessarily have a fundamental understanding of, uh, the stakeholders, et cetera, that need to be reached out and, and they bid on projects with a level of uncertainty which I think we can put behind us if, uh, staff undertakes it.
So that was a yes?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Lekowski, does this not also improve the value of the vacant land that will exist after this shelter is completed between, uh, the shelter and the library? Doesn't that make that more valuable as well because of the utilities being available?
Chairman Bishop, yes, it makes it a buildable lot, completely buildable lot.
Okay. Okay, so there's no further discussion. We have a motion on the floor. Need a second?
Second.
Uh, you made the motion, Supervisor Watson.
I believe.
Supervisor Angus made a s...
Oh, just for discussion. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we do need a, a second. I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. It's been seconded by myself. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes by majority vote. Next item, number 95. Discussion of possible action. Acknowledge and refer to the county engineer for engineering report and Mojave County Transportation Commission for review and recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, the establishment of on-surface sections of Torrance Road, Hammer Road, Gardena Road, Lakewood Road, and Huntington Road, abutting commercially-zoned properties as county highways for the purpose of future soil stabilization, hard-surfacing, and response to significant redistribution of traffic flow attributed to the State Route 95, raised median construction between Hammer Road and Gardena Road in Mojave Valley area. So, Mr. Lekowski, do you want to, uh, enlighten us on this one? And I guess my question is, uh, Highway 95, the construction is complete now, I'm assuming, and has its traffic diminished on the side streets?
The Chairman Bishop, members of the board, um, in connection with the highly successful Fort Mojave, uh, Walmart, uh, the improvements to, uh, State Route 68 that were implemented included a raised median from Hammer Road on north through, uh, Gardena Road. And despite, uh, Public Works, uh, through multiple iteration, expressing some concerns with the traffic impact analysis that was presented for Walmart, indicating, uh, no undue increase in traffic volume along the westerly side roads entering State Road 95. Common sense always told us that if vehicles that were accustomed to making, say, left turns, especially on that western side, west of State Road 95, that go north to the, to the greater Bullhead City area, could no longer do that with the raised median, that they would redistribute and either seek, uh, an opening in, uh, State Road 95 on south, uh, down by Torrance Road, or go further north up by Corona. And that's exactly what happened. We saw, you know, certain approaches of these side roads to State Road 95 increase in traffic volume by 100 to 200%. And because they all abut commercial properties, uh, they all carry a, a reasonable amount of, uh, heavy truck traffic, which we will quantify in an engineering study. Uh, we are looking at the real practicality of hard-surfacing these roads at a relatively nominal investment versus the, uh, recurring blading that would have to take place over time. It was a very smart move for us to do that on Corona Road to the north. We did that in 2016 and we're seeking board consideration and direction to pursue this approach in FY '21.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Gould, this is your area, is it not?
Um, Madam Chairman, I move that item 95 be adopted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 96. Discussion of possible action to approve and authorize the Public Works Program to administer and adopt the median program. Okay, this is... This is, uh, probably because of the work that's going on in Dolan Springs that has brought attention to the fact that community wants to beautify, uh, the sidewalk area. They're quite proud of the improvements in, in their communities. So as a result of, uh, those, um, requests, Public Works has, uh, put together a really nice adopt-a-medium permit program. And with, with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item is number 97. It's be a discussion of possible action. Approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-107. Be accepting the road maintenance petition request that ship drive from Davis Road to Laguna Road be accepted into the Mojave County Maintenance Program for tertiary maintenance in the Golden Valley area.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes, three to two. Is that what you got? Any? Okay. Next item, number 99. Next item, number 99, Discussion of Possible Action, Authorize the Reclassification of the Office Specialist Position to an Economic Development Specialist.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 100, Discussion of Possible Action, Provide an Update and Receive Legal Advice from Legal Counsel Regarding Litigation and Transwestern Pipeline Company versus Arizona Department of Revenue Tax Valuation Appeals, and Provide Direction and Instruction to Legal Counsel Including Settlement Consideration. This was discussed during executive session, and I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, if I may, I think Supervisor Angus wanted to make a statement on this, or is this not the one? Can't remember.
Oh, okay.
I can remember, there was one that you wanted to say something.
I just wanted to say that this item is not due to anything that this board or this county has done. Utility valuations are done by the Department of Revenue, and when there are challenges, they are the ones that defend it, and we're left holding the bag. And so I'm hoping that this year or the next several years that the state legislature will take this up and make it fair. Because right now I do not believe it's a fair process. Thank you. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
As far as a motion on 100 is concerned, the county attorney's office is recommending that the board move to direct the Attorney General to not seek a petition of review to the Supreme Court for the reasons stated during executive session, and also to recommend to the Attorney General that they continue with negotiations with Transwestern.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, but I do have a comment.
Supervisor Watson, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. In light of this liability that we've known about for a great deal of time, I'm petitioning the board to next year to really give a great deal of thought to the total liability that Mojave County faces. It faces a cumulative liability of a total of $65 million. If this board does not take action to increase a portion of those property taxes to cover these liabilities, the board will find itself in an impossible situation in the future. Today, we look at the situation with this particular item, and it can be handled. If it's disregarded and just kick the can down the road, the interest and the total liability will be impossible for Mojave County to entertain in the future. That's my comment.
Hey, thank you. And I do want to remind everybody that we have the South Point challenge coming up that we'll be facing, and I appreciate you reminding us about that $65 million liability that's looming there and not going to go away. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next item, number 101. It's be a Discussion of Possible Action, Receive Legal Advice from the Mojave County Attorney's Office Concerning Invocation at Board of Supervisors Meeting and Request to Modify the Practice, Instruct the County Attorney Regarding the Board's Position on Invocation at Board of Supervisors Meetings, and Direct the Mojave County Attorney's Office and/or Staff to Take Any Necessary Actions Based Upon the Discussion. I do have one person that signed up to speak on this item. Matt Smith.
No, it's 103.
I don't think it's-
Nope, that was item 103. I did have someone signed up to speak. Here we go, here we go. Reverend Stephen DeFord has signed up to speak. Sorry, man, I bet that scared you.
First of all, let me thank you for the opportunity to speak. I do understand that I am not in total understandance of exactly what this position or what this item is about, but I just wanted to come, when I heard that it was going to be on the agenda today, I wanted to just come and express my personal opinion on trusting that the board would continue to keep the practice of invocation. I couldn't help walking in and seeing, you know, our own county as well as state motto that God enriches. And I trust that this board, as they would ever come across, the potential of ending the practice of invocation. Remember that it's this, that it is God who has enriched us, and out of a heart of gratitude for what He has done, and a prayerful, humble receiving what He would continue to bless us with, that you'd continue that practice. Ms. Bishop, I did appreciate your invocation at the beginning of the hour. And again, just want to be on the record that I would hope, or that this board would continue that practice.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming and saying those words, and I don't think this board has any flavor to end the practice. So we received a complaint letter, the county attorney's office reviewed it, and we discussed it, and will be open for a motion or discussion here.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
I move that the board instruct the county attorney to take no action in this matter.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Reverend. Next item, number 102. It's be a Discussion of Possible Action to Review Case Status, Discuss Options, and Provide Instruction to the County Attorney's Office and the Mojave County Treasurer Regarding Litigation, Including Taxpayer's Request for Abatement Under ARS 4218352 pursuant to ARS 38-43103, A3 and 4.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Angus.
I make a motion that we leave tax in place and deny recommendations of treasurer.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, item number 103. It's be a Discussion of Possible Action, Direct Staff to Work with the Mojave County Attorney's Office and the Legal Defender's Office to Prepare Recommendations for Facility Remodel, Demolition and/or Expansion of the County Attorney's Use of the Former DES Building as its Main Office, Demolition of the County Attorney's Victim/Witness Building for Parking Purposes, Moving the LDO into the County Attorney's Current Office, Moving the County Attorney's Victim/Witness into the LDO's Current Building, and Any Other Related Constructions. Final Recommendations Shall Be Returned to the Board of Supervisors for Its Consideration and Approval Within the Next 60 Days. And this is the item that Matt Smith had signed up to speak on. Little more in your comfort zone? This is a lot of moving around and remodeling.
Good morning, everyone. Before I speak, I know that Judge Gertler had indicated that he wanted to speak on this item as well, and I believe he has a time crunch right now, so perhaps if the board would approve it, he could go first?
Yes, that would be perfectly okay with me. Your Honor.
Good morning. May it please the Chair, Board Members, Management, Administration, and Counsel. When this item first came up on the agenda, I made a simple inquiry as to whether or not the agreement that we had reached that the court would be allowed to continue to utilize the DES building for the purposes of being able to conduct our jury trials was going to continue. And that inquiry led us onto this, I'm going to call it a wild goose chase, because it ended up into a sideshow of an issue that apparently was not as high on the priority list that Public Works had, but they had entertained the thought. And so I guess it was a good thing, because the ultimate result of the sideshow was that, no, the courts can continue to use the DES building to conduct the jury impanelment process, and that the county attorney would, office would continue to adhere to the agreement that we would be able to utilize the DES building for those purposes, but that they would be able to go ahead and start working on floor plans and working on, you know, other design options, so the court fully supports this particular agenda item. And I would like to thank the various board members who took time out of the day to speak with me when the other issue first arose. Thank you.
Thank you. County Attorney Matt Smith.
Thank you again, and good morning once again, Madam Chair, members of our esteemed Board of Supervisors, Madam Clerk, Deputy County Attorney, Mr. Esplin, and of course our County Manager, Mr. Elters. I wanted to speak today on behalf of this item and our office because of the need for some expansion and the lack of space in the current office that we have. The board has previously approved in the budget the sum of up to $1.2 million for this project, and that is in fiscal year 2020 slash 2021. We have realized for some time that we have run out of space. We have people doubling down with multiple people in the same office in different locations in our building, including a back office where we have to house two attorneys at all times, which is not ideal. Thankfully, right now, it is a actual husband and wife, assuming they got married like they were supposed to this Saturday in Los Angeles area of California. I have not heard yet. I was invited to the wedding, was not able to go, but I believe they're married and they actually share the back office, so I don't think it's a problem. But we do have multiple people in different spaces. In the budget this year, we got approval for two new attorneys, and of course, the three people to help process the acts on body camera work. That came at a very good time that the board approved that. We're not asking for any more people, so don't worry about that. But I would let everyone know that right after we asked for the additional people to handle the body cameras, at that time, we knew the sheriff's office had got approval for body cameras through the board. Right after that, we found out that Bullhead City Police Department is also going to have body cameras. So those positions were greatly needed, and they came at the right time, but we simply have run out of space. Unbeknownst to just about everybody, including our former county manager, Mike Hendricks, who used to run Public Works and has been here forever, most people in the county do not know that the county actually owned that land where the DES building is. And for those of you who are not familiar that much with Kingman, everybody, I think, knows where the courthouse is. So if I'm looking at the courthouse, which I can through my office window, and then you go to the left of that, down the road there, on Fourth Street there, you have St. Mary's Catholic Church. Behind that Catholic Church is the DES building. Then next to that, moving closer to the courthouse, is Ron Gilio's office, the Legal Defender's Office, which is our conflict office that handles overflow and conflict cases that the Public Defender's Office cannot handle. Then next to that, used to be the Juvenile Detention Center, which I'm sure Supervisors Watson and Bishop are very familiar with. And that office, for years now, has been run-
We did not spend time there.
Yeah. No, but I know you were ex-law enforcement and probably transported a few juveniles there over the years.
There you go, guilty of that.
Yes.
It's a good thing I'm older, right?
I did not mean to imply anything else. That building has been utilized by our Victim/Witness Division now for years. It house our private investigators, of which we have two, our restitution advocate, our person that handles domestic violence and get orders of protection for victims, and a number of other volunteers and that. It's a well-filled office. And then, of course, next to that, you have the old jail. The current plan, if accepted by the board, is to have us move into the old DES building, which is not the most aesthetically pleasing building in the world, and from a looks vantage point, is not necessarily better than the one we have now. However, it is a lot larger building. It is much bigger than you'd think from looking at it on the outside. A number of months ago, along with my office manager, Lisa Samstag, James Schottman, our chief deputy, John Meeting, and Steve Latauski, we went through that building while DES was still in it. At the time, we knew they were planning on vacating the building, which they had leased the space from the county, and so we had a chance to go through it. John Meeting came up with an estimate of between $1.6 and $1.7 million. I think that it could possibly be done cheaper than that, but we are bringing $750,000 of our own money from RICO funds to the table, so the cost is not going to exceed the $1.2 to the county. And whatever else, you know, if we come in under the overall total, we're committing all of our funds towards this project. The idea then is for our office to move into that space, give us the space we need, the ability to expand in the future. Ron Gilio wants to move his office into our current office, which also will take care of his needs in the future, and because that office is more than enough to fill his needs, will not need any expansion or any other money. We would then move our victim-witness people closer even to our office into Mr. Gilio's office, the Legal Defender's Office. Depending on funds available, we've thought about the possibility, I don't know if it's feasible, of connecting the DES building with Ron Gilio's building, so that we have access, maybe some type of tunnel or some other way of connecting the buildings. I don't know if that's going to happen or not. We would level the current victim-witness building, which is a very old building and not in the best condition for parking, mainly for the courthouse and for everyone else back in that area. And then Mr. Gilio would move into the office that we're in now. So that is what we are proposing. We worked with Mr. Hendricks. We continue to work hopefully with the board and with our new county manager, who I have discussed this with. But Mr. Hendricks was the one that was involved along with John Meeting on this project. I would echo Judge Gertler's sentiments and let the board know that at this time, the courts are using the DES building to help with jury selection. Right now, they are using their building, jury assembly room, and also the DES building to select jurors. Last point I want to make is just to let everyone know that with the cooperation of everybody, that we are doing jury trials. We've been doing jury trials for months, and we're one of the only counties that are doing them at this time. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
So Mr. Smith, what we're wanting to do here is to move the planning stages forward without any disruptive disruptions of the current operations and allow Superior Court to continue using the DES building for jury trials for now?
Correct.
Okay.
Supervisor Angus.
Hi. Just want to make sure that the demolition of the MCAO's Victim/Witness Building for Parking Purposes, that's all included in the number?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item, number 104. So be a Discussion of Possible Action to Authorize a Letter to be Sent to the U.S. Department of Justice Supporting the DOJ's Proposed New Regulations That Specifies the Registration Requirements Under- registration requirements under the Sex Offender Registration and Notification Act, and authorize Chairwoman Jean Bishop to execute the letter on behalf of Mojave County. Supervisor Johnson?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item. It's be a discussion of possible action, an update from the County Public Health Director to the Board of Supervisors regarding recent issues, actions, events, and county responses regarding COVID-19. Updates and taking any necessary actions based upon those updates. We have at the podium Denise Burley, our Director of the Public Health Department.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, thank you. Hope everyone had a nice, long weekend. I'll start out with the numbers. We have 3,689 cases to date. Total deaths are 203, average age of cases 47.8, average age of deaths is 76.2. There were probably questions, as you may be aware, of the reporting done yesterday, so I just wanted to make sure that I addressed those. As you know, you likely saw that there was a reduction in the cases. As we go through cases, our goal is to give you accurate information. In order to do that, that means that we review information, and we make sure that there are no duplicates, that people who are within our jurisdiction stay in our jurisdiction, those people who are not are removed from our jurisdiction, so they're not counted as a case. In this case, we had a number of duplicates coming in throughout the week, and until we have verification of those fully, we can't deduplicate that particular situation in that particular case. So what's happened is, we had a very small number of cases come in over the weekend, combined with a larger number of cases being deduplicated in our case counts. That resulted in a negative. So in some cases, you may see reports in some counties that have like a plus one, minus two. That's a reflection of that type of work behind the scenes that's going on to make sure that the data is accurate. So I just wanted you to be aware of the reasoning behind that and try to respond to any questions that you may have. We're always looking to update and improve our systems for providing data to both you and the public, and hopefully, we've done so so far, but we continue to look for those and strive to find those to make it better, easier for the public to read. So if you have any suggestions, we'd be certainly open to those to listen. We are meeting tomorrow, actually, to talk about that very topic, and have a meeting with all the data people on our crew, and then some of our leadership to talk through some of those questions and answers, and see if we can come up with any new or revised processes that we can present to you on Thursday.
Thank you.
Any questions there?
Okay, no questions. All right.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
On the Health Facebook page last night, you gave a great explanation of why the cases have declined. You said, and I quote, "Our cases and death records are kept in a secure database maintained by the Arizona Department of Health Services. This database has numerous benefits, including cost-saving, security of data, immediate test result data, et cetera, but it does mean that we must work within the system they have for data management. Thus, we can't have duplicates, cases transferred in and out from our counties and other conditions that may temporarily affect our case counts on some days." You fail to include the simple explanations in the press release, though. I think when we do these deduplications, in case cleanups, we do explain to the public the process in a simple, easy-to-understand way. We have several folks who already believe our numbers are being falsified, and when we remove and add cases without a simple explanation, we're just adding to the argument. That's all, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson, I definitely understand, and we actually talked this morning about posting something on the website that would permanently stay up to try to give people an explanation, and certainly in press releases, we can provide that same language and, and try to help with that, with that process. So we're happy to add that. All right, I wanted to give a testing update. I did request an update on the prison testing. You probably noticed, if you went to the state website, that our testing went way up in that one week. That was actually good news for us, and looking at the percent positivity was way down because there were very few cases within that. So good news, of course, but I was trying to give you kind of a more formal update on all of the results from that, because the last time I reported back to you, there were, I believe, 27 pending, or 24 pending, somewhere in there. Also in testing, we've got our Health and Human Services Testing, SURGE, event coming up this weekend. We've posted some information on our site. Communications Director has posted more. Just to give you an update on our numbers there, excuse me, just one sec, let me get to the right page. What we have scheduled so far, as of 7:00 o'clock this morning, we have 182 people registered at the Bullhead City Events, 92 for Kingman, 68 total for Lake Havasu City. As you also noticed, we did send out information about the Embry Women's Health Program and their testing, which is more of a long-term testing project. Those particular test sites will be open as they were stated, so 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week, is what they're planning on testing. This will be at each of the community colleges and was organized and coordinated between Embry Women's Health and MCC campuses. So the deans at each of those colleges made all the arrangements along with the president. So we were sort of in the, in the backdrop. But that will start, and actually did start, I believe, yesterday. It looks like the results have a 36 to 72-hour turnaround time. If people want an antigen test, then they can take that. It's $50 for that, and that has a shorter turnaround time. Any questions on testing and events?
Quite a bit of it going on this-
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you. I've read a lot on these rapid antigen tests. I've read that these tests may not pick up asymptomatic cases that do not have a high viral load to their system. We seem to be basing a lot of our reopening, especially in colleges, on these rapid tests. If we're seeing a lot of false negatives due to the test accuracy or sensitivity, do you think this could be a problem, and what is your opinion of these tests?
Certainly, Supervisor Johnson. You know, the gold standard for testing is a PCR test. That gives you a very, very high rate of accuracy, and then you can move down to the antigen testing as another measure. I do think that there are certainly concerns about the reliability. I think it's still a pretty sensitive test, but does it add to a potential false negative or false positive? Maybe, yes. So I don't see, certainly there are some doctor's offices using the Cadell machine, which is, I believe, an antigen test, and in those cases, you know, when we're using a lot of those tests in the community, we definitely want to make sure that those are accurate and reliable.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Denise, what were the prison numbers in the end?
I knew you were going to ask that. Let me see if I have them handy. If not, I will make sure I provide them for you.
Thank you.
I want to say they were upwards of about 2,864 tested of those. I don't want to be inaccurate, I'm sorry, and I don't have them right here in front of me, so-
That's fine.
It was a very low number.
That's, I thought it was low.
Exactly, so-
So we're going to take those numbers.
There was concern, of course, that those would have been higher and, and been a negative against our percent positivity rate and case numbers, but it, as it turns out, it's definitely worked to our benefit.
Sure, and it ended up being, it was routine testing, not that they were having any kind of an outbreak in that particular prison.
Correct. I mean, they have had cases, and they did have an up, upshoot of cases, but in this case, they were, the Department of Corrections is really trying to test more frequently in these types of settings, because it's very easily spread-
Sure.
-in that type of congregate setting.
For sure. Thank you.
Certainly. Okay, I just ran through all my updates. Any questions that I can answer for you? Oh, Supervisor Gold, you had asked about who was directing the efforts, requiring the efforts for planning-
Correct.
-for vaccine. That is actually coming from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention.
So it's a suggestion, then, not a mandate? Thank you.
The states are taking it as direction, so, I mean, in terms of the planning process.
Right. The point is, they cannot require it, because they have no authority over the states. Thank you.
So Denise, I'm happy to report that yesterday, I decided to go by the Embry testing at MCC at the Kingman Campus. There were no lines there. It took about 10 minutes. It was non-invasive, and I survived, so I'll find the results of that in a few days. But I just wanted to let, let the folks out there know that they're, they're out there in the parking lot, just waiting for you to drive in, and you don't even have to get out of your vehicle.
Right, right. Yeah, it's, it's a very convenient service and free, so that's always, removing barriers from care and barriers from getting tested is a great thing.
Okay. Any other questions of Denise? Okay, thank you very much, Denise. This has probably been your shortest report to date.
It has.
Okay, our next and final item, number 106. It's be a discussion of possible action to approve the recommendation of the County Manager to appoint Michael J. Smith to the positions of Community Services Director, Mojave County Housing Authority Director, and Director of Mojave-Lapaz Workforce Development Area, effective September 28, 2020, at Range 29, Step 4, and up to one month salary for moving expenses. County Manager Elters, I believe Mr. Smith may be on the telephone. I think we were expecting him to be here in person, but-
Excuse me, Madam Chair, Board Members. I believe Mr. Smith is available for a phone call. We have a phone number to get ahold of him, should the Board Members have any questions for him that either Ken or I cannot answer.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. We also provided to HR the call-in number, so, Mr. Smith, are you on our line?
This is Mr. Smith. I am on the line.
He is available on the line.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Smith.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair Bishop.
Is there anything you'd like to say to the Board before I ask each one of the Board Members if they would like to ask you anything? I'll open it up to you first.
Sure, I would, sure, wonderful. Thank you for that, Madam Chair Bishop, Board of Supervisors, County Manager Elters. Having served 20 years in community service and as the Director of Community Health Engagement at a major teaching institution, I've, I've had the pleasure to work in community service and community development, along with the CDBG grants and other housing authorities over the years, and really look forward to, if approved, having the opportunity to serve Mojave County.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. I'll start with Supervisor Watson. Do you have any comments or questions for Mr. Smith?
No comments and no questions.
Oh, that was easy. Supervisor Angus.
Hi there. I'm assuming that you have lots of experience with CDBG grants?
Yes, Supervisor, I do.
Okay, then we'll be talking.
Excellent.
Supervisor Gold.
None today, Madam Chairman.
None today.
Okay, Supervisor Johnson.
Nothing.
All right, well, I, I don't have any questions either, except I am on the Workforce Development Board, and so I think I'll be working with you quite a bit in the different committees. So with that, I'll just say, welcome to Mojave County, and I look forward to meeting you in person.
Madam Chair, I make a motion for approval.
Okay, we have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.